Rocking on this.
We are.
Yep. Liz, Katie, everybody there?
Already. Ready to go.
Okay.
Good to have everybody.
All right, let's get this going then. It's after six, so let's make it happen. So, everybody, welcome to the Fortuna Planning Commission for September fourteenth. And the meeting is being held under the COVID declaration. The government put together the in twenty nine twenty. Yada, yada, yada. So anyway, we're all here and doing a Zoom meeting that we don't want to do, but we're going to be here and doing it. The night we should go over a few things that are on the agenda. The there's going to be some information for anybody at home wanting to participate in this meeting. We really want you to do that. Katie is going to put some information up. Please take down that information. She's going to flash it more than a few times tonight to let you guys know at home that we're, we want you to be involved in this meeting. So to start off, we're going to do the opening, the flag salute. I'm going to do the flag salute. Kate's going to put up the flag. Please understand, we're not saying it's no disrespect to anybody. We're just, we'll have to do it at this moment. So. Katie, if you would, please. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, interior politic, fully just stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we get a roll call, please?
All right, roll call vote, Commissioner Lickley.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Holly Liston, she will not be attending tonight. Chairman Mobley.
I'm here.
Vice Chair Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Seitz also will not be attending tonight, so Commissioner Wells.
Here.
Right, thank you. All right. We get approval of all this ten minutes.
Make the motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right.
Roll call vote again, Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
And Commissioner Wells.
Yes.
All right. So we're going to open the, open up the meeting to oral comment from the public. At this time, the public can be heard on any item that's not on the agenda tonight. So speakers can be heard on this, on anything they want to be talking about. Give advice that the commission cannot take any action or deliberation on oral comment. Okay, he's putting up all the information and so please, if you're out there, take this information down because it's the same information that will be given throughout the night on any other part of the agenda. So as we have this moment of awkward silence, how's everybody doing?
Good.
No, no complaints.
Well, they knew it was really good because I got a bunch of them.
I figured out it doesn't do any good.
Well, there you go. I haven't figured that out yet. I figure if I keep griping, somebody might listen.
What?
I figured out if I keep griping, somebody might listen. It hasn't, it hasn't worked yet, but you know, there's always that one time. Katie, you hear anything or see anything?
Oh, it doesn't look like we have any calls.
All right.
I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion to close oral comments at this time.
Second.
All right, there we go. All right, let's move over to the first order of this, which is looks like it's going to be a kind of a big thing. So tonight we have a design review of a eighteen hundred square foot restaurant, including elevations, dollars, lines, gate, that is Redwood Restaurant. So can we get some background on this, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Mobley and plant commissioners. So this is a fun and exciting project, a design review project. It is principally permitted, but it's subject to a building permit. There's no discretionary decision. This is just for designer view. And I'm going to just go ahead and get right into it and present the, the design components and then hand it over to the plant commission for discussion. So I'm going to share my screen here. So as soon as this is sharing, so again, this is Fresh Freeze Restaurant. It's located at four oh nine South Fortuna Boulevard. That's on the southeast corner. And diagonally across from the gas station and across from West Side Pizza. So it's at that intersection and it's a vacant parcel. It's been, I wouldn't call it lighted, but it's definitely, this will be a vast improvement and I think it will add a lot of, you know, livelihood to that corner. So that's a really great thing for just the overall commercial development of Fortuna Boulevard. So you can see the building elevation, the schematic, and so this is the frontage and that would be looking, I think, towards Fortuna, Fortuna Boulevard. So this kind of angle, Fortuna Boulevard, you know, these, and then the lower elevation is looking southeast. And then in the other corner is the prosine. So it's very similar, not quite identical, but very similar to the Fresh Freeze that is on Harris Avenue in, in Eureka. Going to go over, I'm just going to go through all the plans here. This is the layout. And the building is set back facing Fortuna Boulevard. And there's, there will be a new driveway and the landscaping between the driveway and Fortuna Boulevard is in, is shown in the shaded area and there is landscaping around the perimeter. And the main driveway is from Fortuna Boulevard and you can see that there's an entry and an exit. So it's a wide, wide enough, you know, it's the main entrance. So that's where the majority of the cars will enter. And then there's parking to the south and parking to the east. And they do have, I think it's three spaces that are in addition to the code required minimum number of parking spaces. So they have ample parking according to the zoning code. There's not a drive-through proposed on this project. So it's all walk-up and they have a small interior dining space and then exterior tables as well. And there is a exit also, an entrance and an exit on Newburgh Road. And we did receive, I'll take the time now to describe that. We received, we believe there are four letters from residents on Summer Street. And that is just to the, to the east. So there's a row of multifamily and single-family houses to to the east and their concern is that traffic would be directed onto Summer Street. Summer Street is pretty narrow. Just enough room for two, you know, there, with the parking on both sides, I think it has a forty-foot right of way instead of the normal fifty feet. And so parking lots are under the purview of the city engineer and they did review this and approve it. And of course, they, the engineering department was involved in the safe routes to school improvements that were done a couple of years ago on Newburgh Road. And those improvements did create a barrier, like a, quite an median, but so traffic on Newburgh gets directed, you know, it's not, there's no crossover and there would only be, I'm turning to the right here, basically. So, you know, in, in approving and reviewing this parking lot, the consideration or the expectation is that the majority of the cars will be using the main entrance. So, you know, it's designed this way. And, you know, certainly Fortuna Boulevard is the main roadway serving the project. And so a majority of the, the traffic will be using Fortuna Boulevard. It's not really convenient to use Newburgh Road exit unless, you know, there will certainly be plenty of customers who will be using Newburgh to continue on to Rona Bill Road. So the neighborhoods to the to the east will, it's not expected that a significant number of vehicles will use Summer Street for a few reasons. Mainly, it's not a convenient road to use. You know, it's, it's, it is crowded and awkward. So I think, you know, for the most part, a number of drivers will avoid that. And the Fortuna Boulevard exit has options for turning around, either, you know, cutting across when there's no traffic and, you know, so this, I'm talking about traffic that needs to go southbound when they exit, because the, the main driveway or the main turning lane onto westbound over road is just across the road from this, this project. So, you know, there will be the options of cutting across and getting into that left turn lane or continuing on through the intersection and using one of the brakes in the median on Fortuna Boulevard. So the city engineer didn't think that there would be a problem based on those options and the fact that the main entrance, the entrance and, and exiting is on Fortuna Boulevard. So you know, and again, there's ample parking and the width, the two lane width here meets the code. It actually exceeds the distance by a couple of feet here. So it's not going to be a crowded parking lot. Yeah. With the exception of the first few months, as we've seen with the, you know, the new fast food places in Eureka, there, certainly that's to be expected. But on a, you know, on a regular operating basis, it, it's not going to be expected to be a problem. So these are the building elevations again. And so overall, the design is a it's a retro design that's really reminiscent of, you know, like mid-century drive-up or, you know, drive-up hamburger stands. And it certainly, you know, is designed that way and creates that image really strongly. So all of the components of the building are geared towards that. And I'm going to go back to, I think it's better viewed on here. So the design features include variation in the roof elevations and variation in the wall projections. Slanted roof that slants towards the back and then there's a sort of a tower architectural component here. The eaves overhang quite well and kind of give a stronger image of the building, you know, as opposed to having small eaves, but that kind of creates a stronger shed, I guess, a shed roof style building. Wayne scotting with CMU block. The walls are, it's not stucco, but it says it's a plaster style. Powder coated aluminum rim on some of the features and then wood cornice on a few of other of the wall projections. It's a cannon levered pitch roof design, which gives, it'll also give customers protect, protection. So there's the walk-in door for ordering in there. And then there's also an ordering and a pickup window outside. Storefront windows. There's a trash enclosure here and that matches the design. It's covered and it's got door protection. And of course, the colors, you can see the white body, the red trim, the red Wayne scotting, and then a powder gray trim on the, on the cornice. And the signage, the signage will be neon, which is really nice. And then the lettering also, some of the lettering will be, I think it's the main sign up at the top that will also be neon and then the wall signs are painted. And let's see. And then they've submitted a landscaping plan, which includes six trees along the parking lot. And then a, a number of shrubs and grass or not grass, but ground cover, which are described in the legend. The trees are red leaf Japanese maple and evergreen magnolia. And then the lighting plan includes bollards along the parking lot. There's three bollards in each parking area. Two fifteen-foot lighting poles. And then let's see, there are some details. So the detail for the bollards. And they're three and a half foot dark bollard. Shielded, the lighting is shielded on these bollards, which is acquired. And these are the, the pole lights, which they're shielded as well and downward facing. So that meets the city's, it's not as code standard, but it's a general plan standard for protected lighting that's downcast and just required to be on the property and not project onto neighboring property. And that's included as a design review standard. So with that, I'm going to hand it back to the planning commission for your discussion.
All right. Thank you, Liz. Anybody have any comments or concerns?
So what? What are we called upon to do today? With this?
So this is a design review consideration. So they're proposing the, the design of the building that includes all of the architectural and, you know, design details and you're considering and improving the landscaping plan, building colors and lighting.
And so this has already come before the planning commission at some point in time to, to approve the project?
No, this is, this is, this is a considered, it's classified as a restaurant in the, in the zoning code. This is a commercial thoroughfare zoning district. And restaurants are principally permitted, so they are not subject to, say, a conditional use permit. So, you know, by code, they are, they're only required to get a building permit. So the use itself is allowed. And other certain zoning standards are established, which would include the setbacks and the, you know, basically the parking layout. So it's, it's the design review that you're considering. So you can, you know, consider any kind of design considerations that you are interested in. And if, you know, under your purview, you might, if you have any objections or any anything that you think would fit in better with Fortuna or improve the project, then that would be open to discussion. And I would, you know, if you were going to make any suggestions or requirements, I would discuss this with the applicant at this meeting.
I have a couple of things. And they're related. I'm looking at the landscaping preview with regards to the exit going off on the Newburgh Road. I'm sorry if I'm looking to my left, I'm looking at the drawing. And the concern I have is a couple of things. And I guess also the landscaping going along Fortuna Boulevard. Sidewalk is right up against the road or highway, however you want to look at it. I'm just concerned about the landscaping maintenance with regards to the type of landscape we choose, that it doesn't protrude into the sidewalk to impede pedestrian walkway. Additionally, when you look at that landscape and the way it's drawn, it looks like there's, I can't tell if it's bushes or trees on the corners, but if somebody's trying to exit and they're trying to make that right turn and they're looking to their left, it might be rather difficult to see oncoming traffic to make that right turn. And the other concern I have is some people, ignorant drivers that we have out there and being an insurance agent, I can attest to that. Is that some people may try to make that left turn when they're not supposed to. So I don't know if there's a way in which we can create some kind of an impediment to create, I don't know, something where they can't make that left turn. Because I am concerned with regards to that because it is a very tight corner right there. And I could see somebody trying to chance it to make that left turn to get on to Fortuna Boulevard in another direction. Those are my main concerns.
So I, I gotta, I think right there, making that left turn, there's island already there.
I just, unless it's there, I'm looking at Zillow right now on my other computer here and I don't see anything there blocking that. And unless I
Jump up on there too.
Yeah. Because I put the address in and I'm looking at it and all I see is two yellow lines.
There's a median going both ways.
Current that Zillow drawing or the Zillow picture is.
So are you talking about Fortuna Boulevard or?
Newburgh.
Newburgh.
Oh, Newburgh.
Right.
They did some work, they did some work during the park. I mean, during the school and their parking lot. And that was part of that realignment. I think there's a couple curb right there.
So there's a curb there going between a, a Newburgh going east and west there?
Yeah, right there. Yeah, right there at the start.
That's what I was wondering. The Zillow picture is, I didn't know how current that was. That's why I was asking that question.
Yeah, I think it goes back to the edge of the back of the property. Right on there. That's how far back they went.
My concern with that exit on, on Newburgh is that it has the potential to channel traffic into a residential area. And people that maybe don't know the area that well are going to be looking for a place to turn around and I don't particularly care for that, but I don't know if that's under our purview or not.
Yeah, I can pass those concerns on. I will definitely pass those concerns on to the city engineer.
Liz, what, what is the proportion of parking handicap to the total parking spaces? I see only one handicap. Should there be two?
Gary, you want to respond to that? Gary's the ADA implementer as the building official.
There we go. Trying to get the thing to turn off. Size of this restaurant, one is adequate.
Thank you.
All right.
I can respond to your concerns about the visibility from the, you know, as being blocked by the landscaping. If you want. So they will be required to keep that vegetation below three, it's three feet. The code actually does require some shrubs or low fencing on landscaping strips between the parking and the main street. So there's actually a requirement by the code to have some kind of landscaping there and it's, the requirement is for landscaping three feet in height. So it's considered that that is still a safe view. Safe vision clearance from oncoming, oncoming traffic and pedestrians. And, and that is something that the city enforces. So either, you know, whether it's a staff observing some kind of a, a visual obstruction or a complaint by a neighbor or a, a driver. So it's definitely something that, you know, we stay on top of. So there will be a maintenance requirement of the property owner.
And will there be some additional work on Fortuna Boulevard with regards to the curb cutting?
Um, yes. So I'm that is done through the building department, through on the building permit. So all building permits, when they submit their building permit for construction, that permit, you know, this isn't the first opportunity for city review. Building permits also get circulated through city staff, including public works, engineering department, fire department, planning and building. And then go ahead.
And I assume that there'll be sidewalks on Fortuna Boulevard and Newburgh as well, right?
Yes, that's always a requirement on a new construction like this. As you've seen, you can see it at Ninth and Main on the Pizza, Pizza Hut Restaurant and elsewhere. You'll, on a commercial development, you'll see a new, either a new sidewalk if there isn't any there. Or if it's an old crumbling sidewalk, the public works department will ask that it be replaced.
So Liz, I have a question. This, just clarification on that point is, I would hate to see them cut and paste the sidewalk. I think it needs to be like the one up there at Ninth and Main. It was all, take out all the old stuff, put new stuff in.
Yeah. I'll pass that on to the engineering public works department as well.
Other than those issues, I see the project as being a great addition to that corner. It's really good there and it'll bring a little bit more of an attractive look, I think, to the city right there as well.
Who doesn't like fresh trees?
I make a drive to Eureka just for it.
Yeah.
I like to look at the old cars.
Yep.
I think one time ago, that place is going to be packed.
In fact, if they ever get rid of those old cars, I want to be able to buy some. So whoever I need to talk to, I want to know.
And Kevin, we already
I love taking my grandkids in there and pointing out those old cars and saying, look, you've never seen one like that before.
I'm a try five guy myself, so.
So we have the applicant tonight. Would the applicant like to say anything or poke in on a, a bit of this?
Absolutely. I would love to introduce myself. My name is Paula Hamilton. I own Redwood Restaurants and Fresh Freeze in Eureka. And this has been an absolute dream for me for over a decade to bring Fresh Freeze to Fortuna. So this is super exciting for me. I have an amazing architect, Tom Bond and Pacific Builders. And this has been an amazing, fun project for us to sit around my desk and just create this beautiful Fresh Freeze to add to, in addition to, to Fortuna. And I just, I'm super excited about it and thank you. I, I really, I really appreciate the opportunity to meet all of you tonight and just discuss this blossoming of Fresh Freeze and Fortuna. So thank you.
Well, thank you. It's really cool that you're coming here. We love to see new stuff coming in. We can, we definitely need some fresh enough. So anybody else have any issues or comments?
I, I could, I could make some comments.
Please.
I'm Tom Bond. I'm the architect on the project. I was just making some notes from some of the comments you guys made. As far as the view at the corner, what you see on the landscape plan at the immediate corner of Newburgh and Fortuna Boulevard is actually cobbles, not plant material. Because we're aware that there's always the possibility that people want to walk through that corner and rather than trample the plants, they can walk over a, a surface that won't damage anything. It'll also improve the visibility. All of the plants along the front of the, of the building are all relatively low and they're designed specifically for maintenance. Paula was very clear that they have to go out there every night and clean up a little bit of trash, develop straws and all the stuff that comes from people eating burgers. And so we wanted to make the landscape such that it would be easy to clean it up. So it's not going to be dense. It's going to be relatively open. There are six trees. One tree immediately at the exit by Newburgh and one up at the north east corner and then a couple towards the south side. As far as the left turn is concerned, from Newburgh onto Fortuna Boulevard, there are plastic bollards, I guess you'd call them, at the median. So it's, it's not feasible that anybody could turn left out of the northern exit and, and, and make a left turn onto Newburgh. So I mean, unless they're willing to run over the plastic bollards, they're absolutely forced to turn right. So that's not going to be a concern. As far as the frontage along Fortuna Boulevard, that's going to be a completely new sidewalk. The sidewalk is there. It's catchy. It's a, the surface is very eroded. All the existing curb cuts are all in the wrong place. So there's going to be a new curb and sidewalk along the entire frontage. So that should be very new. Other than that, I think you guys did a good job of describing the project. The one thing that doesn't show up on the lighting plan is around the overhang, which we made overly large, as Ms. Shori said. There'll be downlights all the way around that will light the building and light the seating area. So the customers, even in, when it's dark outside, are going to be able to see, see well. They'll be able to eat out there comfortably. So the lighting should be pretty well covered. Other than that, unless you have some questions, I think it pretty well covers it.
Yeah, I got one. And it's just because the the closeness of the resonance in the back. Hours, that kind of thing. You're going to put time of night are people going to be there? And, and the only reason I'm asking is you butt right up against a, a few neighbors. And I know if that was my house, I'd want to know what time you guys are going to be closing.
Currently, the Fresh Freeze in Eureka closes at nine. But in the summer, you know, pre-pandemic, the Fresh Freeze would close at ten. So at ten o'clock, Fresh Freeze is closed and, and then there, there will be, you know, we are hoping to have music, but because of the, the cement block building that, that music, I even stood at the Fresh Freeze in Eureka and I stood behind the building. And as soon as you make that corner, you can't hear the music. The, I mean, the music only goes so loud, but you know, it is a, a ten o'clock. I, I am aiming for a ten o'clock closing.
Okay, just if there's anybody at home in the letters we got, I, I know people are going to be concerned about the, the noise and so just want to make sure that we're trying to cover all our bases.
Of course.
Can I make one comment? As far as, as far as that's concerned, we designed this with that in mind. And the back of the building has no restaurant functions whatsoever. So it's not like employees are going to be going And the back of the building has no restaurant functions whatsoever. So it's not like employees are going to be going and coming out of the back of the building. It's just going to be a blank concrete block wall and no activities there whatsoever. Plus, plus it's concrete block wall and it's got a layer of insulation inside. So as far as sound getting out of the restaurant, it's, it's going to be very, very minimal.
Can I just add up to that comment along with what Chris was saying? I was a planning commissioner back in Indiana for a city of about 30,000 people. And one of the things that we've always discussed is that when we see a project like this where your, your backyard neighbor is a resident, is that we've always asked that those particular commercial people, in this case, you, Paula and Tom, is that you maybe try to dress it up a little bit with some greenery so that they're not just looking at a concrete wall as a neighbor. So I, I suggest that maybe you might want to consider that. To kind of give them something a little bit more to look at that keeps the value of their home too than looking at just the back of a white building.
Right, right.
So it's just a suggestion, something to think about. And I don't know if we have anything like that, Liz, in our programs that we have set up for our design reviews when it comes to commercial residential properties kind of button up against each other. If not, I think that's something we should look at for the future. This is the first time I've had a project like this since I've been on board where this is a topic that could even be discussed. But give it some consideration. You know, it's always good to have good and happy neighbors.
Yeah.
We absolutely want that.
Yes.
Uh, I got something, Tom. Your light poles that are in the front parking lot. Uh, is there a way we can get those pushed a little bit further back into the front, into those two planters?
Move to the west, you mean?
Push to, put, put them, relocate them a little further back into the landscaping. There's, you got them, you got them positioned right there at the corner. And usually when that goes on, we got usually baller posts required or at least a sonotube kind of platform instead as a protection for the light pole. But if you get it back into that plant, we won't have to put bollards or something around it.
Well, I think we were, we were assuming that we would probably have a concrete bollard at the base just because no matter where we put them, there's, there's the possibility that somebody might hit them. But I don't see any problem why they couldn't move back into the landscape a little bit.
Yeah, I think if you moved it back in, you have less people going to have a chance to even accidentally bump into them. Back into each side.
And you got my garbage trucks coming towards you, so.
Yeah, his garbage trucks too. Anytime I get those around, you, you know, you got people backing up and overhangs of the rears and stuff like that. So we, we get them out of the way. Everybody's going to be happier along the road.
Okay.
So, so Tom, can I ask you a quick question on that since we said garbage? So on the, on the color view, I see a double doored. And it looks like it there, the, the bins are going to be, the garbage on one side, recycle on the other. But then in the plans, it looks like they're stacked. Is, it doesn't really matter either way. We're going to take care of it, but it just.
Well, they are.
I'm just asking, since I got you up.
Well, they are stacked east, east to west. You know, we have a pretty tight site here. And, and we don't have a lot of north, south dimension to work with. So we tried to keep them as contained as we could in the north, south direction. So they are stacked east to west. You're right, we will have a recycling bin. We will have a trash bin. They will both need to come out in order to, to be picked up by the, by the trash collecting people. So that is true.
Yeah. So we're going to end up coming in off of the Boulevard and leaving on Newburgh. It'd be the about, the only way I can see it, because if they try to make that U-turn going back on there, they're going to take up the whole, a couple lanes, so.
Yeah, that's, that's what we anticipated. The truck would come in off of Fortuna Boulevard, make a left, pull up in front of the trash enclosure area, bins would come out, get loaded, and then the truck would just keep on going to Newburgh, turn right and go on about their business.
Yeah, and that, yeah, there's, they have some businesses down that way. It, it, I'm really, it's all good to me. So. So at this time, if anybody, unless anybody else has any comments, let's open up the public comment and see what else is out there. See if maybe else has any comments any concerns about what's going on. So Katie, would you put that back up there for anybody at home can see and make sure that everybody's aware of what's happening?
We did have some letters that were received as public comment, so I'm going to read those into the record now.
Do so.
We had three letters from neighbors on Summer Street. They're all identical. So I'll read the letter one time and then let you know who the senders were. So we said, it says, "We residents of Summer Street would like to respond to the proposed plan. We are not opposed to the facility itself, but to the layout of traffic handling. In recent years, the city of Fortuna has made some changes to Newburgh Road in an attempt to alleviate traffic congestion between South Fortuna Boulevard and Lawndale. This has proven to only exasperate the congestion. The proposal requires that egress from the site be right turn only, which only makes sense as the city had curbing placed in the middle of Newburgh Road. This would only add to the already stressful conditions. Summer Street is a very narrow roadway that requires opposing traffic to pull to one side to allow conveyance of oncoming vehicles. There are many grammar school age children that reside on Summer Street and use the street for bicycling, skateboarding and everyday activities. This street is also one of the main access roads to the school from various areas of Newburgh Road. All day long, children are coming and going to the school as well as the upper grade students and high school students utilizing the bus transportation. The requirement of right turn only onto Newburgh Road from this proposed facility will add detrimentally to the traffic on Summer Street as the majority of the patrons will go around the block to access South Fortuna Boulevard. South Fortuna Boulevard has sidewalk adjacent to this proposed site with a great amount already in a driveway configuration. The total length of this site is 237 feet. With the normal ingress egress width normally approximately 30 feet, there is more than adequate space available for more than one access point without using Newburgh Road. That access could be utilized for parking. The proposed access point shown in the proposal could be augmented by adding another at the south end of the site if necessary. We residents of Summer Street would like to appeal for the safety of our children as well as all residents and visitors. Please reconsider the proposal of providing access from this site onto Newburgh Road. And as we have Robin Fiegus, Gail and Shirley Cooley, and Ryan and Rachel McDougal. And then I have one more letter from another community member, not a neighbor. This one is regarding lighting. And this is from Michael Kine. And it says, "This led it, this comment is in regards to the new proposed restaurant at 409 South Fortuna Boulevard. I would like the planning commission to consider requiring the lighting to have blinders on the sides of the parking lighting to discourage light trespass for the neighboring homes. I live at 975 South Fortuna Boulevard next to the Burger King. When the owner updated the lighting without going through the planning department, the lighting made my property seem as if it was next to an airport. The three homes on our driveway have been bathed in light during the night. Sadly, the lighting still hasn't been updated to our neighborhood satisfaction and I do not want the same issue for the folks residing on Summer Street. Please consider looking into this request." That's all we have for the letters. So I will put up the graphics now so folks can call in if they have any other comments.
I have a question.
Yes. Go ahead. Is that Walt?
Yes.
Go ahead.
How you doing?
Good, Chris. How are you?
Good. What you got going on?
Um, I have a question. First of all, I better apologize because we have missed part of your meeting because Channel 10 can't seem to get their act together today. And as on a historical note, what my question has to do with the school across the street, the elementary school. And on a historical note, I was a member of the first sixth grade class at that school, uh, which tells you how old I am. My question is, have there been any safety studies done with regard to all the kids that are over there and their possible impact on the restaurant?
I don't know.
Well, the impact in what regard?
Well, if you've got a bunch of kids running around, which kids are kids, and you're suddenly loading in a whole lot of traffic on that intersection, I, I don't know. But it sounds to me like your insurance agent among you might be a little concerned about that.
Dave, Walt, are you asking about a bunch of kids running over for ice cream? A bunch of kids running back and forth during, during certain times of the day.
I don't know. Kids are kids, so they're going to be around. And the more traffic you put into the situation, the more possibility you have of running over a kid.
Yeah, I can respond to that to some degree. I think that for the most, for the most part, the traffic is going to be spread out throughout the day with a couple of peak periods, which would be at lunchtime. You know, say from 12, 12 to 1, and then at dinnertime. And, you know, to some degree that would, those hours would conflict with the times that the grade school gets out. You know, most kids get picked up. There are some kids who walk. It's not a huge number. But most kids, especially say kindergarten kids who get out of school at, at noon, they might conflict with that lunch hour rush, but they aren't going to be on the street because certainly they don't walk home. So I don't think there's going to be a huge amount of, you know, child pedestrian traffic during those peak hours, maybe like at 2:30 or 3:00 when school get, when the grade school gets out, which isn't going to coincide with, um, you know, the lunch or the dinner rush. And then I, so I think for the most part, it's the, you know, the traffic flow from that site will be similar to the gas station across the street and the pizza place across the street. And it's going to be, you know, both of those, the pedestrians and the traffic are going to be spread out. And, you know, I don't think there's considered to be a huge impact. You know, this is a commercial district and the roads are constructed for, you know, there's sidewalks, there's safety measures on, implemented on the streets now. There's lights at that corner. I don't think it's considered that there's going to be a big pedestrian safety issue as a result of this project. It's just, you know, just the normal, just a normal situation. You know, any pedestrian is going to be at risk, I guess. But, you know, the, the streets are designed for pedestrians, especially at the school and a lot of, you know, most kids get picked up these days, especially with COVID. So hopefully that answers your concerns to some degree.
So, so, so Liz, what I, I'm sure they're interruptible. Cause I just live over off of Shamrock and have to go by there once in a while. I try to time my, when I leave for lunch at work, then come home for lunch, I try to time it to where I'm not around when the, the school lets out. Or I try not to be anywhere around when the school's letting off. Um, there's a lot of people that park in, in literally in the middle of the road over there. With, there's a lot of traffic going on with people dropping off and picking up their kids, uh, certain times of the day. So I see a whole lot of that happening on a daily basis where it gets very congested in that area. Right there between Fortuna Boulevard and Lawndale. There's just, everybody's trying to get their kids and understandably, nobody wants their kids running around in, with going on. The climate nowadays is just seems really weird. So there's a lot of people running around. So I kind of see your point, Walt, with what's going on with the traffic and all the kids going back and forth. But what Liz was just saying, as far as the, most people are picking their kids up. I don't see a lot of kids walking home from school right now. It's either a bus or there's a family member or there's a vehicle there to grab them. Does that help a little bit?
I would suggest that somebody pay a visit to the school authorities and just talk to them.
Can or?
Thank you, Walt.
Thank you.
Katie, we got anybody else?
We do not.
All right. After that, let's looking for a motion to close.
I'll make the motion, we close.
Second.
All right. Thank you. So I'm going to bring it back to you guys. Anybody got any concerns, anything they want to talk about on this project?
I would just like to respond to the lighting issue. Um, we, we have had an issue with that at other commercial businesses around town as they replace their lighting. They often go up to a higher, I don't know if it's the lumens or the watts, and it is a problem. In this case, the, the lighting fixtures are shielded. But I think in the building permit process that we will take a look at the lumens that are, I know that the architect did provide a table, a schedule of the lumens for each of those lighting fixtures. And we'll just take a look at that and make sure that, you know, the city is comfortable with the appropriate amount of lighting and that it doesn't exceed where it's going to affect the residential neighbors today. So that's something that we'll pick up on the, on the building permit process. And it's something that the city needs to do anyway. We need to get up to speed on the amount of lighting. We don't have that in a code right now. It's, it's on our list. It's on our to-do list to consider a lighting code. And that's something that we will be researching.
Can I make a comment about the lighting?
Yes.
So the reason we designed the lighting the way we did with the bollards and at the front of the four different parking areas is specifically to eliminate, eliminate any light spread, undesirable light spread. So to the extent that there's any light beyond the parking lot, it's only going to be on the landscape area immediately at the ground level. And it should be almost completely cut off of the property lines. As far as the pole lamps are concerned, um, you can see on the photometrics on the lighting plan I gave you, tho- those lighting levels dipped to zero at the edges. So there, there, these lights are specifically designed to be cut off fixtures. They put the light exactly where you want them, wanted. And there's going to be next to no light spillage off-site in, in any direction.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. We appreciate your consideration in that design.
All right. At that moment, planning commissioners, you have anything, any more questions, concerns?
How about if I make a motion?
I would love a motion right now.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number P dash 2021 dash 3070, which is a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Fortuna approving the design review of a new restaurant building, including elevations, colors, landscaping and signage.
Oh. Second.
Hey, Katie.
You're muted, Katie.
There we go. Roll call vote. Commissioner Blake Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rogers.
Yes.
And Commissioner Wells.
Absolutely. Yes.
There you go. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
I can't wait to see it.
Thank you.
Be working with you guys, Liz. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, let's move on to our next order of business. So this one looks like it's going to be along. So a public hearing, consider recommendation to the Fortuna City Council regarding amendments to the Fortuna municipal code. Deleting chapter 17.06.183, second residential drawing and replacing it with 17.06.001.5 accessory building unit. So from looking at this, we have one to look at, right?
Yeah, I'll just give it.
You're going to tell us a lot about it today.
There is a lot here. So I appreciate your review of the staff report and your participation in this and other activities of the planning commission. So this is actually another exciting, not, it's not a development project per se, but it is a zoning code ordinance proposed by city staff. And this is done as part of the SB2 planning grant. Um, and this is done as part of the SB two planning grant that we've been working on. Um, and we have a number of projects related to that components. And this is one of them, and you'll be, you'll be receiving other um projects under that SB two planning grant. Um, and the accessory dwelling unit ordinance is really important because, for a number of reasons. Uh mainly, well, first of all, it's triggered by um state law. So the state has considered, um, has made accessory dwelling units principally permitted throughout the state. So um really to prohibit cities from, you know, being overly restrictive where ADUs are prevented from being developed. So with that, the state has created a very long list, very long complicated list of standards um that um override any local code. And the city's code right now, the one that's being proposed to be repealed is real, it's a pretty old code. It's not super friendly, but what the state law does is it voids any local codes that don't comply with the state code. So we've been operating under the state code for, I think, like five or six years now. And so it's a good thing to adopt a local code because what that does is what what's been created here is a code that it complies with state law because we have to comply with state law and that allows certain standards that the state says we must follow. And then we have created a set of standards that um are are um, you know, uh unique to Fortuna. So the state does allow some flexibility and some standards, some local standards to be adopted, and that's what we've done. And then we've also created um an exception process where if uh a developer, a builder wants to, you know, reduce a setback or a height or or some standard like that, we have a um those would go to the planning commission. So there's kind of three, three categories of um standards for accessory dwellings. And those will be explained to you by um the consultants who have been um shepherding this through um from Plan West. So actually with that, I'm happy to turn this over to the Plan West representatives and they will describe the the video presentation.
Thank you, Liz. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Hi, I'm Rob Holmend uh with Plan West Partners uh and Plan West is working on behalf of the city to assist you with a number of things related to housing and your regulations. Um, with me here is Vanessa Blodgett, who's been uh she's the project manager and been instrumental in developing the um content we're talking about tonight. So I'm gonna share my screen. Hopefully that just worked right away. There we go. Super. All right. Uh, so I've got a lot of content to share here. Uh, have no hesitations in interrupting me. If there's something that's unclear, you have a question, just, you know, jump right in with a question and I can help clarify that. So we are here tonight to talk about uh accessory dwelling. And I'm gonna minimize that. So let's uh just start by uh asking what is an accessory dwelling unit and get some definitions out of the way. Uh, and I like to do this visually. So this is an accessory dwelling unit. So you've got a primary structure or a primary residence on the lot. And then in the back of the lot is this accessory dwelling unit or ADU, also known as a mother-in-law unit or a second unit. It's on the same parcel. Um, these are typically in single-family residential um lots, so five, six thousand square foot lot. And as in this example, it can be pushed into the back corner, kind of in the backyard of the the primary house. Another example is this one here. So this is on the same lot, uh but you can see they put up a fence. So we've got uh the primary house here and they blocked off their backyard and then their side yard has the accessory dwelling unit in it. Uh, here's another example. So this one is also in the side yard, but uh they share a deck um with uh their tenant effectively. So this uh secondary dwelling unit or accessory dwelling unit is also in the same lot inside the fence sharing a deck uh on the same parcel. Then we've got this example here. Um, so you've got the primary structure or the primary residence, and then the accessory dwelling unit is, in this case, above the garage. And it looks like in this case, it has been built into the attic space of a formerly existing garage and they've recited it. Uh, and so this is about sixteen feet tall and it's not a second floor on the garage, but it's built into the attic space. Whereas this example uh is actually uh a second floor on top of a garage. So you can imagine this was a garage and they modified the structure to have a second floor on top of it and the the primary uh house is just off to the side. And then this one may not actually have an ADU, but just as an example, this is an actual home in Fortuna. And you've got the primary structure there. The ADU can also be inside the house in such a way that you would never know that it has an accessory dwelling unit interior to the structure as you drive by. So it can have a separate entrance, uh and it has a separate bathroom and a separate kitchens, effectively an entirely separate home. It's uh built inside of this structure and they do a little bit of modification to the outside by adding a door and you can have an ADU inside the structure. So uh there are three primary types of accessory dwelling units and you're going to see these images uh again. So I'm gonna really make sure that you understand this. Uh, we've got detached accessory dwelling units. And that is no modifications to the primary structure. So you've got your home. You don't modify your home in any way. You add a new smaller house on the same parcel. Uh, it's a new standalone residential unit on the same lot. This does result in a visual difference in the lot after project completion. Then we have attached accessory dwelling units. And so you've got very limited modifications to the primary structure, really only just modifying the one wall where this new unit joins onto the house. So you construct a new attached unit on the same lot. There is a visual difference on the lot after project completion, but it really is, just looks like a home addition. So your neighbor neighbors might think that you added another bedroom. Um, when in fact you've added a bedroom and a small kitchen, small bathroom. Uh, but for for the, you know, most people driving down the street, they they might assume that this is just an addition onto the house. And then you've got entirely internal accessory dwelling units where there are interior modifications to the primary structure, but no new building footprint or no new exterior building. So in this case, what this image is showing is that the attic space has been converted to a new unit. Uh, and it would have maybe, you know, an entrance in the back uh where the tenant walks up a set of stairs, gets up here. They have a small bathroom, small kitchen, small bedroom in the attic space. Or in this example, it's, it could also be down in the basement. We don't have basements in Fortuna really. It'd also be a bedroom that's converted and has a small kitchen, bathroom, bedroom. So that is an internal, and there's no visual difference on the lot after project's completion. Uh, except for maybe visual differences limited to a new doorway, uh but otherwise you don't really uh even know that it's got an ADU. All right. So those are our three primary types and we're going to refer back to that image. So just in general, why are we here tonight? Why this ordinance? Um, these, a couple of bullets here straight from uh state law and as uh Director Shory indicated, being um state law contains a lot of detailed requirements about what the city can and cannot do for AD regulations. And you actually do have a section of your code called secondary units, uh secondary dwelling units, and per state law, that section of your code no longer applies. So what we're doing tonight is making a recommendation for a new set of regulations that would replace that outdated and no longer applicable set. Um, so that you can have.
But could I interrupt you?
Please do.
Um, so the question I got it'd be if the state law is saying we have to do this, right?
Right.
We have to come up with our own or we have to go with theirs?
Both. So uh you have a set of regulations in your code right now called secondary dwelling units. The state came up with them. Right? Because the state came up with these regulations and said, cities have to do it this way. And if you don't do it this way, then your code no longer applies and the state law applies exactly as written. But if you want to do it your own way, you can do it your own way within certain parameters. So up to this point, the city has just purely used the state law. What we're proposing to do tonight is to customize that state law a little bit so that it's more applicable and appropriate to Fortuna. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, we're gonna do it no matter what.
I I I hope you like what you see. There are uh some things that you can do, some things that you can't do. So I'll make clear what your options are. And uh we feel like we've come up with something good here. We've met with a number of stakeholders and developers and property owners in Fortuna. So we think that this is uh well-designed to your community. Uh, and uh, well, let's see if you agree. So uh as I said, the city doesn't have an ADU ordinance right now. Uh, you rely on state law. Uh, and that happened in twenty nineteen. Uh, and so now we've drafted our own ADU regulations consistent with that law. So let's look at what they are. Um, so what can you regulate? Well, you can regulate objective design standards. So these are things where uh there's not a, any discretionary decision need to be made to interpret what those mean. Um, so it's like a specific height or specific depth, but it's not, uh, you know, the paint color uh needs to be, uh, you know, something that the neighborhood appreciates. So it has to be objective, not subjective. And then some development standards and we'll look at those as well. So just for your knowledge, this proposed ordinance applies to about four thousand parcels in the city. Um, so that's all of the residentially zoned parcels. You've got state residential and single-family residential, multifamily residential. And just looking at some numbers, uh I started to wonder, you know, what, how how much could this really impact the city? And so there's actually about that many parcels that this would apply to. So if five percent of all those eligible parcels in the city decided to construct an ADU on their property, you would see about two hundred new residential units in the city. Ten percent would be about four hundred. If fifteen percent did, it would be about six hundred. Twenty percent would exceed eight hundred. If if a quarter of all of the eligible parcels in the city do this, you'd see about a thousand new units. You know, so suppose um five percent a year came through, that would probably overwhelm your planning department far more development than you've seen in the past uh ten years, I would estimate. Especially in those one shots, you know, a subdivision that comes in with twenty units. This can sometimes be as much work as it is to uh review and approve a single ADU. So I'll leave it up to you to speculate how much new development you'll see with ADUs in the coming years. But um I would be surprised if it was on the higher end of the scale and and it's likely to be on this lower end of the scale. But uh, you know, we'll we'll see, time will tell. Okay. So your role tonight, as with all zoning-related ordinances, the state requires that the planning commission make a recommendation to city council regarding any proposed ordinance. So we're presenting these details and uh seeking a recommendation from the planning commission to the city council. And then following your recommendation, we'll go to the city council for adoption. Uh, so as uh Director Sherry indicated, uh, yep, go ahead.
So if they're requiring us to do this, do we need to go through all this to this is going to happen no matter what we say right now, right? If we all vote no tonight, this this is gonna come back to us and we're gonna be told, we're gonna have to vote yes one way or another because the state's saying we're gonna have to do this. Am I wrong?
Uh, yeah, I think you're incorrect. So the state law already applies in the city. So you've already been overridden by the state.
So then why are we doing all this? This'd be my question, is going through the the grandeur of saying, hey, by the way, we're gonna go through and tell you all this. Wouldn't it be just easier to say, hey, guys, we're gonna have to do this? And here we are.
Uh, so you already have done it. So you already are applying state law. What we're proposing tonight is to customize that state law, make some tweaks so that it's more appropriate to Fortuna. So right now you're relying exclusively on the way the state wrote it. The state has given us the option to modify it some so that it's more appropriate to Fortuna.
And we're doing this because of a grant we took or is because state law says?
Yep, state law says that you can modify the state regulations if you choose to and the state or the city applied for a grant, assisting with doing just that.
So since the city applied for a grant, that's where we're at or is because state law changed? It doesn't have anything to do with the grant?
Uh, state law changed in twenty nineteen, overriding the regulations you had and giving you the option to customize them and you've chosen not to customize them until now. And uh tonight you can either make a recommendation council and say, I think that these custom modifications to the state law are good. You can make a recommendation to the city council and say, we don't want these custom regulations, or you can make recommendations and say, hey, they're mostly good, but here I think are a couple of places where we'd like some additional modifications.
So if I can cut to the, if what I'm hearing you say, Chris, is let's just get to what is the recommendations that we can augment and review those instead of going through everything that the state's already mandated. This is that and get directly to the modifications.
In my opinion, you're absolutely right. What you just said was absolutely right. We've gone, we know there's nothing we're gonna change very much. I, in my opinion, I mean, if somebody else is out there has a different opinion, please, if you want to hear what's going on. But from what I'm thinking and what I'm seeing, it's pretty cut and dry. We're either gonna do it or we're not gonna do it. And to sit here and waste time, to me, it just seems kind of foolish, but.
Sure. So I'll give you my opinion on that. As the planning commission, I think you should be informed in what the city's regulations are. So this will inform you on what the city's regulations are, which are also state law. If you want to just know what you have influence on, I can skip to that. So it's your choice on whether you want to be informed in what your city regulations are or not.
Can I have a specific question? I'm pretty familiar with the city regulations as they were, and I read through the state regulations today. Uh, the significant changes I saw were in the square footage, uh requirements. Uh, city, am I correct? The city former regulations were much more restrictive than what they are going to be, what they are now under the state regulations.
Yes.
I'm looking at twelve hundred square feet. It, can you uh clarify that and where that would apply?
Uh, yep, uh, so the state regulations say that um you cannot set a a maximum unit size smaller than twelve hundred square feet. So effectively, everyone that has a single-family parcel in the city has the right to build up to a twelve hundred square foot unit, accessory dwelling unit. You could allow that to be more if you chose to, but you can't let it be less.
Okay. Well, it used to be eight hundred, so that's quite a significant uh increase.
Right. Then there's also setbacks. There's building height. There's a number of uh regulations. Um, so I I don't know which planning commissioner it was, but one of you suggested that we just skip right to the things that you have direct influence over. Uh, I prepared presentations that you can understand the whole set of regulations so that you're aware of what your regulations are going to be in the city. Your choice. What would you like me to share?
I'll leave it up to you guys, whatever you want to hear. If you want to hear the whole presentation, please say so. If you don't, please say so. Anybody have a objection either way?
Well, I'll add that you're required to make a recommendation to the council, either to approve or deny the changes. So I think it might be beneficial to go through the the PowerPoint so that you know what you're making a recommendation on. So either way, there's a vote that's required before a zoning ordinance goes to the, to the city council. It's required under our code and the state law that the planning commission make a recommendation.
And if you're looking to jump straight to the recommendation, this is it here.
So what's everybody's concerns? Please speak up.
I spoke my piece. I'll let anybody else say theirs.
I I I'm interested in what is applicable to us in Fortuna.
Well, the, yeah, the whole suite is applicable to you in Fortuna.
Why don't you just go ahead and we'll, we'll, we'll go through it. Just go ahead with what you were doing. Please.
I'll skip that there. Okay, here we go. Okay, so we prepared a handout uh that city staff can utilize to communicate with people when they come in and say, what can I do on my property? And so I've used that as a uh kind of a instruction tool for how to understand the ordinance. Um, so this was also in your agenda packet. And uh there's, you know, some clarification on, you know, what you, you know, where you can do it. Uh, and that same early presentation that I showed you on the three types. And then there's a second page, and this is really where all the details are. So you've got internal ADUs, attached ADUs and detached and by state law and So you've got internal ADUs, attached ADUs and detached and by state law and these custom regulations that we came up with. There's different standards in each one of those. And so there's, you know, each row identifies the different standards that we're talking about, whether it's the maximum part of the lot that you can fill up. Or setbacks, et cetera. So if you wanted to do a detached ADU in your backyard. Uh, as one of the commissioners indicated, the regulation is now twelve hundred square foot maximum. Whereas formerly with the city, it was less than that. So if we look at this in detail. The number of ADUs per lot on a single family lot is only one. So internal. Attached, detached, it doesn't matter which type you choose to do. You can only do one on a given lot. So you could not do. An internal ADU and a detached, you can only do one or the other. It's a little more complicated on multifamily lots. Uh, and so when it's detached, you can do no more than two per lot. And for internal, uh, you can do up to twenty five percent of the existing units. And so if there are four, you can do one. If there are ten, uh, you can do two or three, depending on how the city does its rounding. And so these are the multifamily parcels in the city or multi-family zones in the city. So that red there is one of the things that state law will not allow you to change. And so I'm gonna be highlighting things in green so that you can see the things that you can change and things in red, the things that you're not allowed to change. So this is one of those state regulations that you can't modify, but now you're aware of what that regulation is. Uh, the Florida area maximum or how much of the total lot you can fill up internal is no maximum, really should say not applicable. Because there's no change to the building footprint on the lot, so it's really not applicable. Uh, and then for. The attached ones, uh, you can, for one bedrooms, you can go up to fifty percent of the total building area. Or eight hundred and fifty square feet, which is ever is greater. And for more than one bedroom, same foot per, or same ADU that's attached. You can go up to a thousand square feet or fifty percent, which is ever is greater. And this is one where uh, you can't by state law make these numbers any smaller, but you can make them larger. And the way we've set this up in the code is that if someone in the city wants to make these larger. They have to come before the planning commission to get a conditional use permit. If they're willing to stick within these numbers, then they can get approval at the counter with their building permit.
I ask a good question.
Please do.
You said it can be eight hundred and fifty or the greater, which means it could be bigger than the actual. Uh, fit, uh, footprint of the, of the building itself.
Correct. Yep. So that.
Yeah, I'm gonna put on my insurance hat here a minute. So that means that the primary house footprint could be smaller than the ADU.
Yes.
And the state is not giving that consideration because that's gonna be almost impossible to write an insurance policy for.
In that case, you could theoretically swap them. And so it really is just nomenclature at that point. Uh, unless there's nuances to insurance that I don't know about, which I'm sure there are.
It is based on the primary address.
They, uh. I'd say that's definitely worth looking at and understanding, though, like you said, that part is with state law. And so there's not a lot that the city can do about it. One thing that we could do is potentially do a scan of the city and find out how many. Uh, residential units are less than eight hundred and fifty square feet. I'm gonna suspect that there are very, very few, if any, but there, you know, there could be.
There's a few, I've insured them.
Okay.
But not that many.
Yeah. So in those rare instances, the, it sounds like there could be an insurance problem. Uh, and. If you'd like, we can do some research and see, uh, you know, if the state has addressed that. If, if you're indicating it's a problem, then I'm sure it's come up elsewhere. And so if the state has addressed that.
Well, it could for the person that's petitioning, that is, in this case, the owner, the property owner.
Uh huh.
It put them in a position of uninsurability.
Hmm.
And it was also then can affect their loans with the, with the banks and such like that. So. There could be issues there that need to be considered.
Uh, what I would recommend in that case then is that it becomes standard practice of city staff to inform applicants. Hey, your dwelling unit is very unusual in that it's eight hundred square feet. And you're asking for an eight hundred and fifty square foot accessory dwelling unit. Which the city will allow, but just be aware that could cause insurance problems for you. And so. At the very least, city staff can inform people of that potential problem.
Well, and also can affect their loan.
And again, the city staff can just make a, you know, an informational notification to the applicant, though. By state law, city staff can't prevent them from applying for it. Does that help?
Yeah, I'm just wanting to make that point because it could become an issue and I don't think the state even thought that through.
Yeah, I think it's a good point and. Yeah, good point and also good practice for the city staff to be aware and to inform people while we can't prevent you from doing this. You may be creating problems for yourself with, with loans or insurance. And so staff can just inform the applicants in those unusual instances. Any other questions on this so far? Okay. Um, if the city thinks eight hundred and fifty square feet is too big, the state overrides. Uh, and so, you know, those numbers can't be reduced, but they can be exceeded through a conditional use permit. If you want to go larger, you need approval from the planning commission. Then for detached, uh, total area is twelve hundred square feet and it could be the same instance. And this would be less uncommon, um, that a primary unit would be less than twelve hundred square feet and the ADU would become larger. Uh, and so again, uh, the insurance and loan problems aren't something the city regulates, but certainly can. Uh, inform applicants. And this is again, one of those things where the city can allow. If you choose to, and this, what this ordinance is all about is, this is one of those things where we're exercising the ability to make some changes. Uh, if somebody wants to go bigger than twelve hundred square feet, they can go before the planning commission and get a conditional use permit. And so your ADU can be up to twelve hundred square feet. Uh, no larger than, uh, whoops, sorry about.
Rob, let me, let me just interject something again, so you understand something.
Okay.
So if you have this separate units, an ADU, and it's larger than the primary home, I'm gonna come back to the insurance side of things. We have one lot. There is no insurance company out there that's gonna write. For two homes with a primary is smaller than the other. So you're gonna be creating yourself issues there. For everybody across the, the frickin' state. And they, they did not think these things through because we, I can't see us splitting up a property. They have two different lots. For one thing, they probably wouldn't match up to what we have based on code. The other issue is then you can't have a secondary home larger than the primary home when it comes to writing an insurance policy. And also then when you're looking at bank loans, they're gonna be looking at which is the primary. Because they're gonna be basing it on how the insurance policy is gonna be written. So I'm telling you, I, I'm not against the ADUs. But there's some things that we have to really take into consideration and whether or not it'll even get through that the people could lose their insurance. Or even to be their loan because they can't carry an insurance policy on the property and on liability.
Yeah. Uh, so again.
Mandate you too.
I'm sorry?
They're just gonna mandate the insurance company now, right? Just like they're mandating everybody else.
Well, they have to get more entities involved with that, with the insurance commissioner and other things. I've been down this road. I, I'm just telling you, this is some of the things we dealt with when I was doing with the ADUs back in Indiana. And these are some of the things that we had to address then too, and, and their issues. There are gonna be issues about this.
Yeah. Uh, so I appreciate that information, Commissioner Bradley. And to my knowledge, the city can't uh, influence that at all.
I'm not saying the city can't. I'm just saying that we need to make sure that the people are aware of this because. Sure, it's a great investment idea, but it's gonna be creating a, it's gonna be Pandora's box for them.
Agreed. Yep. I will make a recommendation that city staff inform applicants in those instances where they're proposing an ADU larger than the primary.
You brought, you brought up the, is a question, I'm Gary, the, the building official, uh. Yeah. Question about turning the existing house into the ADU and building the primary. You, building it as reversed.
I, I think that's.
At that, if you did that, you would have to, because the ADU right now has a lesser setback. So that means if you decided to keep the house and make that your ADU, build a new structure. That means you'd have to build a new structure with. Go by the municipal codes of their normal setbacks. You couldn't use the lesser setbacks for it.
Um, yes, there are a couple of exceptions. The state prevents you from making a new ADU. Uh, non-conforming, and that's actually written into your code, so we can look at that if you'd like. But yes, I, I see what you're saying and I agree. Uh, that would have to be a very careful path that staff would have to walk someone through.
Okay. It was just something when you were saying that, it just kind of popped up ahead. Well, how does that become a, a, a. Primary residence when it doesn't hit now within, because we wouldn't allow you to build a house with those lesser setbacks.
Right, right, agreed. Yep.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's see if we can keep going here. Uh, so building height. For internal and attached ADUs, uh, the maximum height. Has to be at the same height as the primary residence or the maximum height permitted in the zone district, whichever is less. And this is another one where you can modify this. And so if someone wants to build that is higher than the primary residence. Or then the zone district allows, they can theoretically, uh, come to the planning commission, ask for permission to do that through a conditional use permit. And so that is an option that we exercise, that we don't have to exercise, but we thought that provided a good amount of flexibility. Then with detached, uh, it's a sixteen foot ministerial approval. And the maximum height, it's the same effective system. If you build it sixteen feet or less, it's approved over the counter. If you want to exceed sixteen feet, then you can do so through a conditional use permit.
How, how does that work with a garage at, uh, the unit up above it?
Uh, same thing. So if you can fit it in, so if your garage is built such as this here, where it's a story and a half, sixteen foot. And you have the space inside to still comply with the building code and modify the interior, you could do so and add a staircase on the exterior.
Okay, you, you did show, as you made a comment, turn this roof off, build a new story and put a roof, uh, new roof on it.
So that would be only possible with a conditional use permit in this case.
Okay.
Though you theoretically could make it automatically allowed. And so that's one of the flexibilities built into the state regulations, something that you can change. If you want to be even more permissible, effectively all the state law does is. Prevents the city from, uh, preventing ADUs. And sets a certain ceiling and says, if you wanna increase that ceiling, you would increase the standards. Uh, more housing, the better. So the state allows you to exceed these standards if you're gonna produce even more housing. So. We felt like, uh, after a lot of review and talking to developers and property owners. Um, that it would not necessarily be prudent to allow automatically people to build an ADU above their garage without any discretionary. Uh, hearings, because then, you know, it's possible that that structure could ward over their neighbor's yard. So at the very least, if they're gonna exceed sixteen feet, they need to come to the planning commission, have a conversation with you and get your approval. Does that make sense?
Yep, that's what they do right now.
Okay. Minimum setbacks internal, that's not applicable, uh, because you're not changing the footprint of the building. Attached, uh, and this is what your, your building official is just indicating, uh, the front yard setbacks.
Can I stop you real quick?
Please.
The internal. You said it's not applicable, so is there a. Uh, minimum standard for a. Single family, say a single family home, said twenty five percent of it. Have been your standard size of the square footage before they can do that, before they can make it an ADU. Before we take like, just say, a twelve hundred square foot home and kick, make it into four units.
Yeah, well, okay, so. In a single family residential.
Throwing it out there, just so everybody knows.
Well, I'll, I'll give you some clarification. On a single family lot, in a single family residential zone district, you cannot do four units. You can only add one ADU. In a multifamily zone. For internal conversions, you can increase by twenty five percent. And so you would only be able to add four. If you already had sixteen. So that would be a pretty substantial development and all internal. So. Could you ask your question again?
So what, so is there a minimum size square footage on that internal?
Got you. Is there?
Eight hundred, so each apartment, let's say there's a four unit apartment, each one's already eight hundred square feet and they wanna push it into. Add four more units or two more units.
Yes, so this code wouldn't regulate that, but the California building code does regulate that a residential dwelling unit can be no smaller than a hundred and twenty square feet. Plus a closet, plus a bathroom. Uh, so that, that is really small.
It's really small.
That's what the twenty five percent of unit increase is about. So yes, you can take some small five hundred square foot units. And start breaking them up, but you could not increase the total number of units in a multifamily dwelling by more than twenty five percent.
Wow.
And that's not something that you can change unless you wanna increase it. So you could change that from twenty five percent. To fifty percent because it would produce more housing, but you can't go smaller than twenty five percent.
Okay, and you're, you're still calling that an ADU even though we're an apartment, which is not a residence?
Uh, that's what our state law. That's what the state law calls it. Personally, I feel like it's a really bad move on the state to start getting ADUs into, uh, multifamily zones. But we don't have any choice on that. But the only choice we have is to increase that standard, not to decrease it.
Yeah, because, because as, as you're very aware of, when we're building this thing and being in apartments and so on. It's not a residence. We, it is, it's a commercial building. The building department, it says a commercial building built that way. So it has different kinds of requirements now. Not saying you can't build a fiveplex or a sixplex, you know. I just, is, is there gonna? I guess it's something I need to look at the building codes on that one to figure out how that works. So. Mute point on my end. I'm going a little too far the other direction my brain is. So.
I'm following you on that though, Gary. I get where you're going with it.
Yeah, you're making dog houses.
You can be, and no, nobody says you can't, and he is. Correct, you could build small little. By, but with an apartment, you could build yourself the little efficiency apartments all day long. And that's basically what they're doing is they're building, they're saying you can carve it out and put efficiency unit into an apartment building.
Yep, there are some standards that would apply. You have to have separate entrances for each, so it gets a little tricky for internal subdivisions, but. You know, two hundred square feet is really small.
Yeah.
Okay. Did I answer your question on this?
Close enough.
Okay, so attached. The front yard setback will match the front yard setback of the existing structure if you do an attached ADU. But your side yard and rear yard, the state says that it has to be four feet. You can make it less, which allows for more housing. We didn't recommend that you change that. Um, but it is possible that you could allow people in, in the way the ordinance is written. People could come to planning commission and say, hey, I need to have an even smaller setback. And so that is written into the code as a possibility. That the planning commission would have to approve. And then detached is effectively the same thing. Uh, with the only exception that it could be zero feet if they're adjacent to an alley, which there are several good examples in Fortuna. Where there are garages that have zero foot setbacks right up against the alley. Uh, and, you know, having a four foot setback against the alley may not be a good idea. Because then someone might be tempted to parallel park their, their car right up against their house. And then their car is gonna hang out into the alley. So zero can actually be better in that case. Uh, and again, this is something that if they want to, to override those or exceed those setbacks, they can come to the planning commission for approval. All right, parking. Uh, no parking required for any accessory dwelling units. That is something the city cannot change. The state said that you can't enforce any parking regulations for new accessory dwelling.
So again, I'm gonna ask a question.
Yep.
So. A. Somebody just hypothetically right now, because for, this is for people living at home, they're thinking about this. And if I'm thinking about it, I guarantee to somebody else, it's, I'm renting a house. I have. A two car garage. They wanna build in my backyard and it's gonna be four feet off the, my. Back door. Put a twelve hundred square foot house. And they're gonna take half of my driveway.
Yeah.
Am I right?
Uh, you, well, I mean, uh, there's a lot of factors there. I'm trying to mentally imagine what you're describing.
So I got a single family home. So I got a single family home.
Okay.
Have a decent sized backyard and will fit a twelve hundred square foot. Place. So they wanna do that. They wanna use my side gate as a secondary interest. And that leads to the driveway that goes out to the street.
Okay.
That would be their secondary entrance.
Okay.
Would that, would that be applicable?
I think so. Vanessa, can you imagine that in a scenario where it wouldn't work?
Well, are you asking about additional parking requirements?
No, I'm, I'm asking about the, the whole thing basically is I'm looking at where I live at this very moment. And I'm looking at my back window right now and I see four feet away from my back door. From my back window, that there's gonna be a new house built, the side yard. Where it, there, there's a walkway that goes out to the driveway. That, that would be a secondary entrance for somebody who's gonna be living in my backyard now. If. Is that, is that what we're talking about today?
It's, yeah, it sounds like that's one of the many possibilities of what we're talking about. So.
Nobody thinks this is absolutely disgusting?
Uh, well, whether or not you do, there are some things that you can change, some things you cannot. So I encourage you to, to focus on the things that you can influence. And put your energy into those.
Yeah, that's not working.
Okay, what would you recommend?
Keep going.
Alright, so no parking requirements. This does not mean that you can't add any. Uh, a developer, property owner can add as many parking spaces as they like. The city just can't require them to add any.
But there is, but the city can prevent them if they don't meet code.
Uh, correct, but you can't prevent them. Well, there, there is no code about parking standards, so that couldn't prevent them.
There you go.
Yeah.
We have no codes for parking?
Not for accessory dwelling units. You can for the other residential units, but not for accessory dwelling units.
What's that, Chris?
So they could park on your lawn.
That's what I'm getting at, that you wanna.
No, they couldn't park in your lawn. So you can have regulations in the city that say that, you know, you can't park on grass or you can't just have.
We do have codes.
Well, right. So you have codes on.
That's my point. When you said that, that left it open that people could park on their lawns. And I, I don't see where we have that not written in there that they can. I'm not trying to be argumentative here. I'm just trying to.
No, no, I get it. Maybe uh, Liz can help me out here. So I imagine there's some place in your code, and if there's not, you could come up with something that says people cannot park. Their cars on grass. Right? So if you're going to park on a lot.
There, there, I'm sure there is in it, but what's being. And I'm sorry, I, I get, I, I know I'm sounding like I'm, I'm pushing you and I'm really not trying to. I know you're just trying to push this through for us and I really appreciate that. Um, I think the whole, in my opinion, this whole thing that states quit through is extremely disgusting. Uh, what they're doing and I hate it. So, and I really appreciate your, what you're trying to do and push us through. And let us know what we're, we, we need to do. On that note, yeah, there are codes that say you can't park on lawn. Um, but if they, if they wanted to take your lawn and turn it into a driveway, is there anything that can say they can't?
Yes.
You see where I'm going? Because if there's no sa- thing saying there's no parking, then where do we go from that point as a city? And as my neighbor decides to do this tomorrow. Or whenever this comes through.
Um, so the zoning code does have a um, requirement or a restriction against parking. Um, not on a paved surface, if it's visible from, from the front, from the street. So. So someone could par- park, you know, behind a fence or something like, that they're allowed to on, on unpaved surfaces. But um, you know, any building permit, if there is parking required, it, it needs to be paved. So that, you know, whatever requirements are for paved parking, we do implement those on the building permit. Um, if. You know, if there is no parking required for an ADU, then um. I, I guess it's assumed that there would be enough parking either on the property associated with, you know. The single family residence that's already constructed or um, hopefully, you know, if there's room. The builder might pave a space anyway because they want that for the tenant or. Or it, and it would be, it would be pushed onto the street or onto an unpaved surface, which would not be enforced unless someone complained. So those are kind of the scenarios.
See Liz, that goes to my next, where I'm going with this, and I'm, I'm down the path with Chris on this. Is that let's say that somebody gets in there and they create four units, plus their own residence, and they have two or three cars with their kids. You get four more cars and you're taking up and they have to have street parking, that prevents the people that have their own homes or they're parking in front of the homes that. My, let's say I have my house and I don't have a garage and I park on the street, which case that's what I had in Eureka. Now I got people parking in front of my house and I gotta park a block away to be able to go to my home. You see what I'm saying? So with this ADU thing and you get people that have all these cars that are, and their neighbors and they're blocking my opportunity to park in front of my home, that's a problem. You wanna talk about creating bad neighbors, we, uh, there's gotta be something that we can do to control that.
And don't we have a code that says with the, how many parking space would be out for a single family home? Just for, um, say there's a three-bedroom home that there's so much parking for that already?
Yeah, that's a normal zoning standard. Um, you know, on, on a typical single family home, normally these days, there's a two-car garage. And there's two spaces in their parking lot. So only two are required. So in some cases, there's excess parking on site.
And now we, now there's no parking for the excess.
ADU.
Two, two bedroom house that just got put in, in my backyard.
Yeah, the state is saying.
No requirement.
The state is saying they don't care about that. They're saying, we wanna facilitate so much affordable housing that. Everyone, we're gonna make it so that everyone can create a secondary, an accessory dwelling on their property. And you know, a lot of cities, bigger cities are, are kinda going with the, with this parking thing where, uh, I think it's San Francisco. And maybe in downtown Arcata, they're not requiring any um, onsite parking for commercial businesses. Because they're more concerned about what gets developed on that site. And you know, there's, there are other reasons why as well, but it's, it's a trend and.
So then why do we have a code at all of what we're doing for any of it? If then, why are we kicking everything out as far as? If somebody wants to build a single family home or a ADU, what's the difference? It's, then why aren't we kicking, why are we saying there's a difference?
I mean, this is one of the standards that the state is establishing.
I get it, but it, it, this is ridiculous.
Yeah, I mean, city, you're not alone, you're not alone. There are plenty of cities who fought against this. Yeah.
Is there a way that we can set up something where if we have a parking regulation? It could possibly limit the opportunity for an ADU based on how much limited parking there is.
Can you ask that again?
Well, if, say we limit how many parks, uh, uh, parking units are allowed with street and, and your driveway. Wouldn't that also then prevent what can happen with the ADU with regards that they're trying to put four units on that property and you have four cars besides their own? So if we had some kind of parking regulation in there, couldn't that prevent some of the ADUs being built based on that? Unless there's somebody that they lives there, doesn't own a car.
Yeah, Vanessa, look like you had an idea, but I'm, I'm not completely following you, but more or less my guess to the answer is going to be no. The state says you can't regulate parking for ADUs.
And in a single family, sorry.
Go ahead.
In a single family, you know, designation, you can have one ADU. So you're adding basically, you know, one unit that could have two bedrooms. Maybe two cars, but so two cars and there would be.
No place for them to park.
Park on the street.
But if they're parking in front of my house, cause I'm their neighbor, now I have no place to park my car.
It's, it's, this is.
A, and as I indicated early on, I don't think that you're going to get a mad rush for.
No, it's just gonna turn in, it's just gonna turn into chaos because nobody's thought this out yet. And it continues to fly the same direction. We're making dog houses in the backyard of people that already have established residents. And we haven't thought about the, the long term. So just like we just tried to muddle through just now, we're just gonna park on the freaking street or make a new parking lot. It's not been thought out. It's another state mandate that is BS. So please continue.
Alright. The next standard is uh, design. Uh, and this is one where you do have uh, the option uh, to make modifications. Whereas parking you cannot. So for internal and attached ADUs, uh, the ADU has to have an exterior entrance. Separate from the primary dwelling. I'm sorry, this you cannot change, but that makes sense. Uh, so that the tenant doesn't have to go through your home to get outside. So you have to have an exterior entrance to the primary dwelling. Though there is an exception for internal, which I'll get to later. It's a different kind of ADU. For detached, uh, the primary entrance. Um, shall face the front, which is the street side or the interior of the parcel. Unless the accessory dwelling is dressed the accessible from an alley. So let me explain what this all means. So suppose you own this house here. And you want to build an accessory dwelling unit uh, on the, the side of your lot. And you've got some nice shrubs that you really want to retain. And so you don't feel like you can put the uh, entrance to the unit facing the street here, cause you don't wanna eliminate your shrubs. But you also don't wanna put it on the side of your house facing your own house, uh, cause you don't wanna see your tenants come and go every day. So you decide you're gonna make it your neighbor's problem and you're gonna put the house over here facing your neighbor's house. You cannot do that. You can put it facing your own house. You cannot put it facing the side yard or your neighbor's house. And you can put it facing the street. And in this case, maybe you have to trim your, your hedges back a little bit and put the door right there. Um, and that is something you can change. Uh, and so we uh, put this in the new ordinance. So that if somebody wants to make a modification of this, they could do so with permission from the planning commission. So if there was a, uh, an exception, um, where it makes sense to put it on the side yard, then the planning commission could authorize that. Any questions on that one?
I, I have a question that's maybe toward, it could be toward the end, but I'm gonna just ask you now. You know, Rob, you're, and, and again, I'm not trying to be confrontational. I'm trying to look at clarity for tonight's meeting here a minute.
Yeah.
We have a motion that we can approve something here and it sounds like it's just a carte blanche based on your presentation. But yet we're talking about things that we can and cannot change. So let's look at the things we can change. I don't see where we're in a position tonight to approve some carte blanche. If there's some individual things that we might wanna consider making augmentations to that we're allowed to do.
Okay.
So if that's the case, I don't know if this is a question for Liz or Katie. We can listen to this presentation and then we're gonna discuss it. And I, I guess with the other commissioners, I don't know if I'm ready to approve something tonight. If there are some things that I question that I think need to be augmented.
Okay.
Cause I can't approve something that's carte blanche if I don't agree with certain aspects.
Sure. So uh, you, what you're doing is making a recommendation to council. Um, but if we go back through this just temporarily. The red things, whether you like it or not, the state says this cannot change.
As I said, those are, I, I given, I'm talking about the ones we've been talking about in green.
So then the green ones, if it's valuable to you, we can either stop at each one and you can have a conversation. Whether you want to recommend this as is to the council. Or whether you like it, it ends, you, you'll recommend it to the council.
That's my point, Rob. That's something I'd like to talk about in digest and not be able to do all tonight. Because there's this, you need a little of the green things.
Yeah.
I, I, for me personally, that I would like to be able to review and I'm not gonna do it all in one night.
Sure.
Well, and I can't.
I'm with you.
Commissioners, but.
Yep, the, the staff report had all this information in there, though I'm happy to give, you know, uh.
I read it.
An alternate version, so you can see just the green things that you can have a, a better understanding of specifically what you can modify. And then we can uh, have this meeting again at your next planning commission meeting. One note is that in each of these cases, what we did was went with the conservative approach. But allowed the planning commission to override some regulations, um. Where we thought like in this case, there could be a really unusual circumstance where a side entrance makes a lot of sense. And so you can't automatically do it, but the planning commission has the authority to evaluate an individual's, you know, unusual circumstance. And say, of course, it makes sense in that case and you can approve it or say, no, if you put it there, you're just gonna be pushing the problem.
Be what we call a conditional use.
Right. Right, exactly. Well, would you like me to go continue with this presentation so you can get the big picture and then decide at the end? I don't think we have a whole lot left.
Yes.
Yeah, we're actually getting really close. So then there's a couple of other things here. Accessory dwelling has to be constructed on a permanent foundation. You can't change that. State law says that. Uh, utilities, um, you can't consider an ADU to be a new residential use. Um, for the purpose of utility connection fees or capacity charges. Uh, and so that is also something you cannot change. So that's just written into the state law. And then.
Into also a septic?
There shouldn't be too many septic systems in the city of Fortuna. I think they're either all connected to. The city's wastewater treatment plant system, or you probably have regulations placed.
So we can't add a water meter to the, the new unit.
Liz, your understanding?
This, yeah, the city has a restriction or a limitation of one meter per, per parcel. And I think that still applies if there's an ADU there. So no.
So, so we, so I gotta, I gotta ask that. So if there's a duplex right now on a single lot. We only have one meter.
For a new, for a new construction, the law, the local code changed at some point. So there may be some that are ground polluted.
Wow.
So the property owner can install a, a sub-meter or whatever it's called, a separate meter themselves. But the city would only have one meter.
So same, it'd read one, but the property owner could have a secondary to be able to do a chargeback to the renter. Got it.
And then this one, love it or hate it, state says, uh, ADUs cannot be short-term vacation rentals. So the shortest amount of time that you can lease an ADU is thirty days.
Well, that's nice.
Alright, so those, that, that table is in that handout. And so I recommend you look at that for a quick glance at the ordinance. The ordinance is, you know, ten dozen pages long. Um, this can, you know, simplifies that for you. There's a third page to the uh, handout, um, that is also useful and, and maybe exactly what you're looking for. And understanding what you can change and what you can't. And so if we zoom in on this. For internal ADUs, including junior ADUs, which I'll define in just a moment. Uh, there are general requirements listed in the ordinance and effectively people can come in and just get a building permit for that. They don't have to go before the planning commission and, and state law effectively prevents you from forcing the other planning commission for a conditional use permit is an inferior change to their own. A junior accessory dwelling unit is no more than five hundred square feet contained entirely within a single family residence. And may include separate sanitation facilities or may share sanitation facilities with the existing structure. So this is almost like renting out a bedroom in your house, um, that shares a bathroom, um, with the primary unit. I assume that these aren't gonna be all that common, but this is set by state law so that you can't change it. So some.
I, I gotta pause.
Yeah, I've seen a crap on Fortuna Boulevard.
I have a question. And I don't know if it's a, a, a question for Jeff or Gary. But do we or do we not have a regulation or law that limits the number of? Families that can be residing in one home?
A single family unit.
Right. Cause if you're renting out a room and they say they wanna rent out, they get a five-bedroom house, they rent it out to five different people. And one bedroom has a family of three.
Can only do one.
Pardon?
Can only do one. You couldn't do five.
Okay, well, that's why I'm going with this. It, is that spelled out in there? There can only be one bedroom? Okay, I'm sorry you interrupted. Maybe I got ahead of the game here.
No worries. It's right here. Um, within a single family residence, so you can only do one.
Or does it say one?
Uh, it probably doesn't, it doesn't say it in this particular. I can jump to the ordinance if you want, but.
You, you understand I'm going with this, Rob. It didn't say one. That's what I caught. I'm not in the detail and I apologize, but I, I look at these things and I jump out and I wanna see them.
Well, so where it would say one is you can only do one ADU as. Well, so where it would say one is you can only do one ADU as a family residential lot. So if you chose for your one to not be in the backyard and not attached to your house, but to simply do that room that you're converting to a JDU, that that is your ADU and you can't do another one. If we're talking about a, say, an eightplex, which you really don't have many of those, but say you have an eightplex, twenty-five percent of that could be an ADU, and so you could turn two of them into junior eighty years that would be bedrooms. But it's really not that much different than internally dividing them. They're just sharing a bathroom. So your concern is a good one, but the state law does prevent what you're concerned about. Which is filling up every bedroom with another family.
Exactly, and that's my point.
Yeah, so that would not be allowed. The state law wouldn't let that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Let's see.
Can I come back to one other question? You said you talked about a permanent foundation.
Yes.
Is there, do they define what a permanent foundation is? You don't have to go back on the screen. I'm just wondering if, no.
Uh, but the building code certainly does.
Okay, that's fine. That's all I needed to know.
Yeah. All right. So this is entirely ministerial if you want to make a modification to the interior of your building within those parameters that we discussed earlier. For attached ADUs, you have to get an ADU permit, which is a form that you have to submit to to Liz and her staff that outlines everything you're attempting to do. And as long as you meet all the standards that we discussed so far, then it's ministerial. In those places where I identify them as green, if you want to exceed any of those standards, you have the option to go before the planning commission and exceed some of those standards. And so we tried to find a balance in which, you know, property owners and developers retain some rights. But the city retains some standards where it's like, hey, we don't want you to go too tall. We don't want you to get too big. Unless the planning commission has the ability to review it. Detached, up to eight hundred square feet and sixteen feet or less, you can get a building permit and get approval right away. So that could be entirely ministerial. If you want to exceed a hundred square feet or exceed sixteen feet in height, then you, as long as you can, well, then you would have to get a planning commission approval. So anything that big. These two, okay, so another way of saying that is these two types here can deviate from the standards with planning commission approval. So anything that's eight hundred square feet or less and internally use are effectively approved at the counter. So that's just saying the same thing in the same way. Then there are also these architectural detail standards. This is something that we added. So this is on top of the state regulations. So this is to prevent new ADUs in the neighborhood being completely out of character with your residential neighborhood. And so an attached ADU, the primary exterior materials have to be the same as the the primary dwelling unit. If the property owner doesn't like that requirement, then they can come to the planning commission approval for you to override that. And roof materials have to be the same as the primary dwelling unit. And if they do that, they're automatically approved. If they don't like that, they can come to the planning commission and you have the option to override that. And then same with historic properties. There, I'm not gonna go through all of these, but the for attached and detached ADUs, we've got all of these standards about historic properties. And these are the standards they have to comply with unless they want to ask you for version to override them, in which case you would have the ability to do that. There are also privacy impacts. This is also entirely something that we created. And so you can review that unless you want me to go over it in detail, but you can override that through a use permit. And the same thing for balconies, decks, and stairs. There are standards written into the code that they have to comply with unless they want you to to petition you to override. And then junior eighty uses, I indicated, is written into state law. Fire sprinklers, that's written in the state law. It's actually in the favor of the creation of housing here. So often hear contractors say they don't like fire sprinkler regulations. This is actually favorable in that case. And then we've talked about utilities. You can't change that. So staff recommendations to open public comment and then adopt this resolution, which is recommending that the council amend the code and delete the section of code that you haven't used in years. And override written by state law and replace it with this one that complies with state law. And it has things that you might not like, but there's not a lot of options you have. You're already actually enforcing those things you don't like. This just adds those additional caveats and allows the planning commission additional authority to override some of the the standards. So I understand your frustration. I understand there's things in there that you don't like. Just be aware, you're already doing those things that you don't like because there are already state laws that you're enforcing.
Rob, I want to let you know that I may come across heated, but it's not directed at you. It's directed at this.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, again, same thing.
I do this because I'm looking for clarity, because we're making decisions here that's gonna be affecting the community going forward. And it's something.
I gotta tell you right now, guys, I'm not comfortable with any part of with it at all. Because I'm, like I said, I'm looking out my back window and I couldn't imagine seeing a twelve-hundred-square-foot house with five people living in it four feet away from my backyard, my my back window. So.
Can I ask a question of Katie or Liz or both of you? Is it possible, and I can't speak for the other commissioners, but for me, to be able to get what we have here with the, you know, these, I'll call it the green things that Rob talked about, highlighted. However, you want to highlight it, green, yellow, I don't care, are things that we can delve down into to see if there are things that we really want to leave as it's written or things we might want to augment for the future.
I think we should absolutely do that for for another commission, for another meeting, is to sit down and go these one by one and see what we need to do or what the public has to say about it also, because this needs to be brought up. This is huge. This isn't a little thing. This is gonna affect us a lot, even though state's saying have to do it.
Well, and again, I'd like to emphasize you already are doing it. So what we're proposing here is to give you additional authority to make modifications that are custom to your community. All of the things that you don't like, you're already doing.
I get that. I'm just talking about the things that we might want to consider augmenting.
Augmenting, yeah. Anybody else have a opinion on that?
I have a a question. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
This is off the wall, but just curious. You say this state law was created in twenty seventeen?
Nineteen, I think.
The the current code that we're dealing with was created in nineteen what?
I think it was originally a few years earlier than that. They've made at least two amendments. So they've been ramping it up several times. It's as recent as this year. So new standards went into effect on January first.
Is there any history of litigation over this?
I'm sure there is.
There are four hundred and ninety-two incorporated cities in California and fifty-two counties. If there have been any lawsuits, none of those local jurisdictions have won. But we can find out if there's actually been any suits.
Okay, just curious.
This reminds me of when I was, again, I hate to reflect back to when I was in another city. When we rewrote our twenty-year comprehensive plan, these are some of the things that we were addressing, including fence lines, exposure of different things in the property to aesthetically affect the the values of your home and the neighbors' homes. This is all some of those things that we're talking about can affect the values of your neighbors' homes based on the impact of how those people live within those homes, et cetera, et cetera. And those are some of the things that I'm thinking about just in the big picture of who you get in there to live in those homes and how they treat them. And so these are some of the things I really feel if there's a way we can augment them, we need to be addressing in in the future meeting, and if we can even address them at all. And I agree, Rob, I appreciate your presentation. You did a very good job. And I understood every bit of it. I did read it. It gave me some clarity, opened up additional questions and concerns for me, obviously. I've been very vocal about it, and I'm sorry if I've taken it and made this meeting longer, but I do have a concern here.
Would it might be helpful, it would be helpful to staff. Would you like to clarify your questions now so that we can be sure to respond to those?
I would like.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. You go.
I was just gonna say, all I want to see is that the items that we can augment. So I can look him over and digest them, because asking my questions now, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna have more questions. And if I could sit down and hold it in my hands and look it over and read it, I'm gonna be able to digest it more and maybe get clarity of the questions or multiple questions that might develop based on how you answer it. Does that make sense?
So in your review of the ordinance, I encourage you to look at. Sorry, find the.
I know, but I need a beer after this.
In the ordinance, review sections E and F. No, I'm sorry, G and H, if you want to understand the things that you have the ability to modify.
Are those things Liz and Katie, you could get to us along with everything else at this presentation tonight to? Because obviously, here's the thing I'd like to see. Rob, your 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 PowerPoint, you highlighted the things that we didn't really see in our paperwork, and and I know we can't do everything. Because Katie and Liz, they do a fantastic job, and I can never say enough good about them. But there are some things that came out tonight that just raised more questions. And I I think I can speak for Chris too, because it sounds like we're talking the same same walking path here that I'd like to be able to review. And I think your presentation, we had everything highlighted, kind of helps my thought process along with what you recommend that we review. So that I can sit down and and maybe write down a few of my notes and see if it's possible to make any suggestions that we think could be beneficial for the city of Fortuna.
Anything up and down that we can, we can, which way we need to go up or down on either the way you have it written, or here's what you can do or can't do, you know, on the on the other side of it. Do we want a four-foot or we want a two-foot? Does it matter which way?
And ask that question, why it can or can't.
Yeah. So I would, I would like to, in my opinion, put this out for another meeting. To our next planning commission meeting, we should open it up to public comment on this moment to let's see if there's anybody out there who has anybody that is sitting there listening to all this, see if they're out there and they have something to add to this. So anybody object to that at this moment?
Please open it.
So anybody out there that's listening and gone through this, please let us know what you think about it. Again, it's just my opinion. I would really like to see more and mold this over a whole lot more before this is, I'm I'm not happy with it, and I can be honest with you guys, is the think this is just BS in every shape or form. It's tyrannical in 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 my opinion, but that's what we're here for, to deal with it. So anybody out there want to talk about it? Please call in, let us know. Katie, we got anybody listening to us at all tonight?
Katie, you're muted.
So I shook my head. No, we don't have anybody.
I'll make the motion that we close public climate at this time.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna come back to you guys. What does everybody think? You guys want to make a motion tonight on this? Or do you guys want to?
So if you're going to continue it, and I would recommend you, you know, make some kind of a motion to continue, and it needs to be done to a specific meeting date so that we don't need to renotice it, you know, running that cost in the time standard.
How much advance notice, one month?
Well, no, it would normally, we would continue it to the next meeting, but I'm gonna be out of town and we're counseling that meeting. So the next available meeting is October twelfth.
Okay, so I'll make the motion that we continue this to the October twelfth meeting with the understanding that we'll be able to get some of the PowerPoint presentation from Rob and some additional information with regards to the, Rob, help me out with this real quick, the the regulations that you said were H and F. I want to add that to the motion.
I think we can pull out the discretionary.
Okay, as long as.
Items that are.
Okay, I default then to staff to be able to pull up those discretionaries, get them to us prior to the meeting. So we can come prepared for the October twelfth meeting. It's a long motion. You can summarize it later for me, Katie.
Is everybody good with that?
I'll need to do a roll call vote.
We need a second first.
I do.
Sandy, you second?
Yes.
A roll call vote, Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Chairman Mobley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rogers.
You muted, Larry.
Larry, shaking your head?
Give a thumbs up. Yes.
And Commissioner Wells.
Yes.
All right, thank you, guys. And and honestly, you guys really, I know it's sounds like we're upset with you. We're really not upset with you. Understand that. It is just like Kevin said, it it it's a lot to go over that we're there's a lot of us have a lot of stake in it that doesn't feel right, and if it don't feel right, I don't want to make a motion on something that I don't feel comfortable with right now. So thank you, everybody, for all your input in in the presentation and it's. I I really appreciate it.
And and we understand. It's a lot to take in. It's, you know, it's definitely something that has been controversial. So you're not the only ones. It's, you know, it's kind of shocking to realize, you know, when the state does preempt local authority, and I know that the League of California Cities, you know, anytime that the state is taking that kind of approach, and the League of California Cities always works for city autonomy. And in this case, you know, this the state has declared, you know, a housing crisis, an affordable housing shortage.
But they're creating it, and that's the problem.
Yeah, there are a lot of.
Then that's really where I think most of us are at. If you're gonna create the problem, this is not how you fix it, is by putting it on somebody else's back. And I'm I'm gonna get political, and I don't want to do that right now, so.
Liz, I have a question because you talked about the League of Cities, and that was one of the things I meant to ask before I made my motion, and I forgot, because I'm tired and it's late. But is there anything out there or some of the other cities that might have, and I'll use the, for lack of a better term, Rob's green things that we can possibly make some changes to, where there's been some changes that other cities have made that we could possibly review? Because I'm old school and I believe in this this saying, the create, the essence of creativity is the ability to copy. Which means that we can take it and make it and own it to our values that we see here, that it would give us a starting point instead of working on a blank piece of paper. Gives us an opportunity to work off of an idea and somebody else's that we can make it ours and make.
Did you just say, don't reinvent the wheel?
Pretty much.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think that.
But we need to get that information. Is there a way to get that as well?
I think it's, I think that Plan West has done that, and I think they've, you know, they work with people who are really familiar with
Okay.
everything that's out there as far as what other cities have done. And, you know, really, the only approach a city can take is, you know, we can't go backwards. We can't fight against what the state has done. So I think all the cities are in the same boat of how to, you know, how to create, how to tailor something to the city. What can we take out of it to make it better for the city? So I don't know if if you have any. Better for the city. So I don't know if if you have anything to add to that, Rob, as to what your process has been.
A really simple way to answer is I'm happy to share with you ordinance of other communities. Um so, you know, I. Uh was the planning director for the Sea of Eureka for five years, and and Eureka did this right away. Uh and so can share you with you what Eureka's done, Humboldt County, Arcata. Um but there are, you know, probably three quarters of the four hundred plus cities in the state have already done this, so. Uh I can share with you what we recommend as, you know, good models, but you're going to find they're going to be largely the same. Uh.
Fine, I I that would be great. It'll give us a an idea of like, like I was trying to say, and like Chris quickly summarized. Don't reinvent the wheel.
Yep, yep, we haven't.
Yeah, and just remember, this is a protective measure. This is really intended to protect the city. You know, in ways that we can.
One thought that came to my mind that I just thought of now is, and we haven't talked about it, is. Based on these A D U's, has anybody talked to the fire departments to find out what kind of an impact that could do to them? You know, because they said no sprinkler systems, I get that, okay, but. I think with new construction, Gary, you tell me if I'm wrong, with new construction at homes, they have to have the interior uh sprinkler systems. And I'm just wondering if you start building all these multiple units, you get higher fire risks and so forth and so on. Has anybody talked to the fire departments to see?
The density, the density of the properties to go together to one another and it. It's ridiculous.
Right, that's where I'm going with this. I I worked at the Paradise Fires for a day. I've seen the 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 demise and and the destruction, and then the density just creates opportunities for more of that. And so I I'm just, I mean, you could just keep going down this path of everything that the impact can be. Creating within the community that can be all negative. And I don't want to be negative, but I got to be a realist too.
I would be interested in seeing how the city of Sacramento is uh dealing with this particular regulation.
Rob, I'm just, he says, has that come up with regards to density in the fire departments?
Well, again, this is, and I think it was, was it twenty sixteen when this started? You have been allowing this to happen without the custom regulations that were proposing for you to make custom regulations. That that will make this more suitable to Fortuna. You've already been doing this, so.
Nobody knew about it then, did they?
Uh well, so you staff certainly did, and the fire department, I'm sure did, and you know, there hasn't been a rush of A D U's nor. A crisis with the fire department, but to answer your question. Uh I, you know, we could call the fire department and see what the the implications would be if every single parcel did an A D U. That would be the extreme scenario.
But it is a good question because the impact it could have in the fire department could be detrimental to the community.
I think it's a good one to research, so we will ask them.
About that, I had a good question tonight.
Okay, let's let's let's, because this is getting late, and I only got six hours before I got to get back to work. So at this moment, let's uh, we we had a motion, we we had a second. We are at that point. We all did did what we don't want to do, so. Let's move on with uh what we're gonna do next.
Did we call it already?
What's that?
We called a motion. I don't remember.
The motion has been made and voted on.
Yes.
I couldn't remember. I'm sorry.
Okay, so I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt everybody, and this is. Something that's gonna haunt us for a while, I believe, in my opinion. Is there any other business from uh city that we need to discuss tonight?
I don't have anything additional for you.
Alright, so thank you, everybody. I'm gonna. Get look for a motion to close. Like I said, it's getting late, and we're gonna hash this out as long as we can hash it out, but.
I'll make the motion to dismiss the meeting at this time.
I'll check it.
Alright, Katie?
Roll call vote, Commissioner Blakely?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Chairman Mobley?
Yes, please.
Vice Chair Rogers? And Commissioner Wells?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, and thank you, everybody, for for all your participation. Really, really thank you so much for all your opinions that.
It was very well prepared, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob and Vanessa.
Good night, everyone. Good night, John.
That was fun.
It was something alright.
I knew there was a reason I wanted to do this.